Good evening and welcome to the second half of the evening. This is the Monday, October 7th, Council Budget Study Session Special Meeting. Want to thank everyone in the audience and folks, the city staff who are here with us this evening on this fine Monday evening. I am going to, we only have one item, ID 0562, Proposed 2020 Budget Presentations, and I'm going to ask City Administrator Wally Bobkowitz to kick us off.
Council President, Members of the Council, good evening. So, we have a two-night affair for you coming up. We're going to start this evening with sort of a general overview. I think we were at 50,000 feet. We're going to go now to 30,000 feet and then work our way in the next week or so to 10,000 feet. But we're going to still stay kind of at high level this evening. Beth is here, is going to start, kind of give you again a little bit broad overview of where we're at, kind of start focusing on some of the policy questions we're going to be asking. We have two memos in your packet this evening. One, dealing with the strategic plan, and David's here to talk about that as you would like, and also then Jeff's here to talk about a memo dealing with park fees. So, the goal for tonight is to stay at that pretty high level. We'll come back tomorrow evening. We'll talk about some funding issues with the CIP. We'll talk about other funds, and then we'll come back next week. Each of the departments will give sort of an operational overview of where they're at, and then that will conclude our presentations of where we're at, and then it'll be your turn with deliberations. You've been very generous in sharing comments and questions with us in writing. We would encourage that this evening. We would encourage that between meetings. Our goal is to make sure that we begin to have written responses, I believe, not next week, but then the following week. Is that the plan, or are we going to try to hopefully toward the end of next week?
We're going to shoot for having some responses this Friday.
Okay, great.
Probably not to all of the questions, but we'll do a first round this Friday. Some of the questions we're going to be responding to in tonight's presentation. So, start to give you little nuggets of information.
So, but our hope is, is that by the end of next week's study session, that you'll have all the information. Hopefully then you'll have all your questions to us, and then I'll allow the council to move forward with deliberations. So, unless there's any preliminary questions, turn it over to Beth.
I will mention one thing before you get started. Councilmember Goodman is excused this evening.
Okay, so with that, I will jump into tonight's presentation. As has been discussed, this is a two-parter because budget is so fun to talk about. Let's spread it out over two nights. Tonight's presentation is going to cover five general topics. We want to provide you with a broad budget overview of where we are from a big-picture perspective. We want to tee up what we are seeing as the key policy questions that we are going to need direction on in terms of key to wrapping up this budget. So, want to start to tee those up for all of you to start thinking around those. Provide you with an overview of the strategies we use to balance the budget this year. Brief overview of the strategic plan, and then there should be time at the end for discussion, although I also encourage if you've got questions as I go to pose those questions. So, tonight's presentation is intended to be sort of the overarching construct of how we developed the budget. Tomorrow night, we're going to pivot and get a little bit more specific and provide a brief overview of each department budget so that you could see how some of these themes that I'm talking about tonight play out in the individual budgets and see the changes going on there. We, formal deliberations are obviously not beginning tonight, but any feedback and direction you give tonight, questions you ask tonight, give us direction of information that we need to prepare to, as we move towards the council meeting October 21st is the next time that we have to present. So, that'll help us start to see where you're coming from and be prepared to respond to questions as we go. So, first, for the budget overview, you've got to start every good process with a calendar. And here is a high-level overview of the budget process calendar that we are looking at. We are on October 7th, the study session, to give you the broad overview. And then tomorrow night, we'll be, as I mentioned, talking about the department budgets more specifically. October 14th is an opportunity for departments to present their work plans for 2020, which very much relate to the budget. On October 21st, there will be the public hearing on the property tax ordinance, which you approved, putting on the public hearing, not the ordinance itself, in tonight's consent calendar. We will also be presenting at that meeting the actual budget ordinance, the salary ordinance, and the fee ordinances related to the budget. And then we move into a series of study sessions where council will have an opportunity to deliberate. On November 4th, we've got it slated for adoption of the property tax ordinance, and then final deliberations on November 7th with budget adoption, hopefully on November 18th. So, in terms of the 2020 proposed budget, it totals $48.2 million, and 50 million of this is the general fund, and that, of course, is the fund that we end up spending a bulk of our time talking about. So, we'll be spending a bulk of our time talking about the general fund. The enterprise funds are the next largest share of the budget, and we will be talking about those in the context of the budget, but as you know, you're also contemplating the rates for those enterprise funds, the utilities, and so that's going to be on a little bit of a different track. So, we're not going to spend a lot of time talking about the utility budgets because that's wrapped up in the rate discussions. And then, as we've talked about, we have a fairly large capital budget this year, 22 million, and that's the direct cash. We've got some debt financing going on as well. So, the capital budget is also fairly substantial in this year's budget, and it does reflect the direction that you provided all of us when you adopted the 2020 to 2025 CIP. In terms of the general fund, we've got two views here that I want to focus you in on. The general fund is, totals $50.2 million this year. It's 3 million less than the 2019 general fund budget. And this view here breaks it down by account type, and what you will see on this view of the general fund is that 52% of the general fund is for salaries and benefits. And then the other large portion of the general fund is intergovernmental services. That represents the contract with Eastside Fire and Rescue, so that's the fire budget. As you look at these cost categories, there's not a lot of flex here. We don't have control over the E for Contract. You know, we pay for those services. Salaries and benefits, there's not a lot of, unless you're eliminating positions, not a lot of flexibility there. And the other categories are fairly small, and the transfers are supporting other government functions, other functions within the city of Issaquah. This next view is the same general fund, the 52.2 million, $50.2 million general fund broken out by program category, and what you'll see here is that 40% of the general fund is for public safety services. So, this includes police, fire, and municipal court. The next largest share is our Parks and Recreation Department. And then administrative services is an amalgamation of a bunch of different city programs, human services, I'm sorry, human resources, finance, executive, legislative. That makes up the administrative services category. And then the other government services category makes up citywide subscriptions like membership to AWC, things of that nature, elections costs, and transfers to other funds. So, that's the high-level overview of the general fund and what makes up the general fund. Want to spend a little bit of time on fund balance. The city has a fund balance policy that says that we need to maintain at least 15% to 20% of general fund expenditures in reserve and fund balance. And the 2020 proposed budget would assume $13.7 million in fund balance, which represents 27.3% of general fund expenditures, so in excess of the target, and this is a good thing. This provides us cushion to respond to unexpected emergencies, opportunities, things of that nature, while still maintaining that 20% target. You don't want to get too much in the habit of going below that 20% target. I should note, you heard earlier this evening that we are expecting the $5.3 million grant from King County for the Bergsma acquisition. You might recall that of that grant, 3 million would go to pay off the loan to Trust for Public Lands that we used to procure that Bergsma property. And then the council made the decision to front a portion of that purchase using fund balance, knowing that grant funding was likely coming back to us, and made a decision at the time that if that grant money came back, that it would replenish fund balance. So, when we receive that grant funding, that fund balance should go up to $15.7 million, which would represent about 31% of general fund expenditures. Want to provide a couple of slides that provide an overview of where we are in terms of staffing levels, and these slides will look familiar to those of you that were on the council last year. They are repeats of those slides, updated for current year numbers. So, the point of this slide is that our FTE levels have, first of all, basically recovered to the pre-recession levels. They took a dip during the recession and were at pre-recession levels, but they have not kept pace with population growth. So, if you tied FTEs as a proxy of service to the population, the population has grown at a rate greater than what our FTEs have grown. Here's another snapshot of the FTEs, but this focuses in on the pre-recession to current period level. And what you'll see at the end there is a wedge, and that wedge represents seven FTEs that we are recommending in the proposed budget be held vacant and frozen into 2020 to generate savings to help us balance the budget. This does represent about 3% of our total FTEs for the budget. So, that shows how that plays out, and it would take us, our FTE, or our filled FTE level in 2020 to below the pre-recession levels. And then here's a snapshot of FTEs relative to population, and again, what you'll see in this chart is that relative to population, our FTEs have, our FTE levels have not kept And then we've got a series of slides now that show revenues and expenditures on a per-capita basis, similar to FTEs, that are not growing at a rate to keep up with population. On the revenue side, the revenues per capita have been declining and are certainly below where they were in 2003. And similar trend for...
Sorry, we have a question from Councilmember Walsh.
So, if we, if a community member was to look at the previous slide that was talking about revenue per capita, what does that essentially mean for them as far as their rate of maybe taxes and other ways that they contribute to city revenue, so that we provide it in a picture for a community member, and does that mean they're paying less?
That's a little bit of a tricky question to answer because when an individual is looking at what they are paying in taxes, they are not just looking at what they are paying necessarily for the city of Issaquah, that it includes state taxes, school district taxes, King County taxes. So, there are likely increases in their overall tax bill, but the amount that is coming, the amount of revenue coming to Issaquah on a per-capita basis is less now than what it was. We'd have to do some digging into tax rates, and I'm not even sure how far back, how tricky that would be, but we can see what we can come up with.
Yeah, I know, in looking myself at historical tax rates, that certainly the property tax rate that we are paying because property values have gone up, but because we're capped at that 1%, that represents that basically of your property taxes, less and less of that is coming to the city.
Or the rate, it's, it's not necessarily that the city's getting less because our property tax has been growing over time, but the tax rate that people are paying. So, there's a couple ways to unpack that question. It's what's the rate that people are paying? What's the total dollar value people are paying? And those are not necessarily one and the same, particularly as it relates to property tax.
Thanks.
Okay, similarly expenditures, the city expenditures on a per-capita basis are also less than what they were in 2013, and certainly less than what they were in 2019. And then here's another look of those data points combined. So, now I wanted to tee up the policy questions that, from our perspective, are important to, for you to consider as you're thinking about the budget. Of course, you may have additional policy questions that you want to raise, but we see these as some of the overarching underpinnings of how the budget was put together and the feedback we're going to need from all of you to hopefully wrap up the budget by November 18th. So, the questions are, and I guess I'll also maybe step back for a moment and say that more so than recent budgets, we are asking the council to give us direction on some fairly meaty policy, policy questions, and that they're not necessarily easy policy questions, so want to acknowledge that. But the policy questions that we see are, that we're looking for council input on is, does the council support the proposed revenue strategies that are included in the proposed budget? And I'm going to go through each one of these individually, but they include bank capacity on property tax, increases to the utility tax, parks fees, and that kind of is the broad revenue category. In terms of the expenditure side, the classification and compensation study, which you heard about last week, or maybe that was two weeks ago, is another significant driver and underpinning of the budget. We have, the mayor spoke in her budget remarks about the desire to do an assessment of city services in 2020 and would be hopefully looking for council support of that work. So, that's an important question. The strategic plan, how we have implemented the strategic plan or promoting to implement elements of the strategic plan in the 2020 budget is another key question that we would like you to think about. And then just the overall approach to the budget of, you know, did we hit the right mix and mark with the way we have constructed the budget. Not looking for specific answers to these questions tonight, but you know, feedback, thoughts you have, and again, want you to think about this as you're considering all of the elements of the budget.
Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. Perhaps my memory is failing. I don't remember ever talking about banked capacity before. I'm a little bit uncertain about it. When I look at the numbers that are in this proposal this year, when you look at what the 1% means to us, and then you look at bank capacity, which spans numerous years, five, six years. So, I didn't do a lot of research on my own, but I would very much like to better understand that because it doesn't seem like, hey, in that year when we didn't do an increase, we forego, we did forego a certain amount, set that aside. Second year, we did forego, set that amount aside. I don't think that's what it is, but if it is, I'd like, I'd like to better understand what that is.
Yes, and I have an explanation for that that I could provide tonight, and we'll also have more of an opportunity to talk about property tax on October 21st, but I am planning on touching on that question this evening a little bit, and we'll see if that answers your question. There's a slide on it that I was going to...
Good, and that slide will also address this policy's impact on the actual rate.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll ask, is there anything around these policy questions? We had, when we passed the strategic plan, we had descriptors in there on how the strategic plan would anchor into the budget process, and that was extremely important to council. Is there anything that was in that that is not reflected in the process that we're using here this evening?
Meaning the priorities you set for?
No, the expectation of how, because one of the critical questions that came out of the strategic plan is, how do we actually implement this, right? Where's the teeth in this? And we said the teeth, one of the primary aspects was in budget, building a budget. So, what I'm asking is, is everything that we talked about, about how to implement the strategic plan in the budget, reflected in the process that we're starting this evening and continuing tomorrow night?
I'm, I think, need David to try and answer that.
Well, we have, Council President, we have a memorandum that's attached to the presentation this evening, and so part toward the end of the presentation is when we're going to talk to that. And I think the memorandum looks specifically at what the council's prioritization process was back in July, what's included and what's not included. Will that be a helpful point to start?
Okay, that's, it's, I think one question is making sure that what we prioritized is in the budget, but there's a separate that really had to do with how the strategic plan informs budget development and wanting to make sure that that process, as it was defined to us. And you don't have to answer right now, but I would like to have at some point the administration circle back to what was presented to council and agreed upon with council. And I'm not asking this because I have any axe to grind on it. I just want to make sure that was a really important conversation at the time and in our adopting the strategic plan, and I just want to make sure that we are following the methodology that we described at that time.
And the memorandum that's attached to the packet this evening, and David's a few slides he's going to address, hopefully will be the beginning of that discussion.
Councilmember Ray?
Thank you. This is a process question. So, we have five policy questions up there. How are we going to go about providing you input as you go through this? How do you want us to provide you input as you go through the rest of this presentation?
I think as we go through elements of the presentation this evening, questions you have about various elements, any direction that you feel comfortable providing now would be helpful, but recognizing we're early in the process and you may not be ready to provide that direction. But questions you have about the concepts, because it's important that we answer those questions for you and give you what you need as you're continuing through your deliberations to provide us with the answers. So, does that...
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, and then there's actually one other policy question that I want to flag that we talked about a little bit at the outset of the presentation, and that is the utility rates. That's on a separate track with council. We're not going to spend time rehashing that through the budget process, but it is a critical underpinning to the budget. So, the rates that you adopt influence the revenues that the utility funds will be receiving, and then the expenditures that they can afford. So, getting clarity on those utility rates is going to be key to adopting the budget. It also influences some items in the general fund, including utility tax assumptions, whether the utility tax is increased or not. There are some assumptions for utility tax revenues that are tied to those rates. And then the city pays those rates itself, for example, to irrigate our parks. So, there is, there's some overlap here. So, just wanted to highlight that this is a key building block to the budget.
Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. Beth, could you go back one slide? And I appreciate the way you did it. You're teeing this up. You know that these are questions, as you, I think you described overarching, you're hoping that we can address. And if I may, take this opportunity, and it's not that I'm looking for answers or responses right now as well, but I think there's some alternative policy questions for us to address as well. And a principal one to me is, how do we balance the budget without any new property tax using bank capacity and with no new utility tax? How do we balance under that set of policies? That's a question I'm going to be revisiting throughout the process, and I'm hoping my colleagues will journey with me on that.
Okay, so, any questions about the utility rates before I move on? Okay, so now I want to provide an overview of the budget balancing strategies that we employed when we built the 2020 proposed budget. As you will recall, when we presented the revenue forecast in August, we are closing a $5.2 million gap within the general fund. And the way we closed this gap is through a combination of expenditure reductions and revenue increases. The expenditure reductions to close the budget gap are $2.7 million, but we actually made deeper reductions than that because, and I'll go into this later in the presentation, there are also adds to the budget. It's, you know, a normal course of business, you know, costs go up. So, we, there are adds in this budget. So, we did have to cut deeper than that $2.7 million to accommodate those increases. So, I just wanted to point that out. And then the revenue increases that we are proposing in this budget would generate an estimated $2.5 million. So, the sum of the $2.7 in expenditure reductions and the $2.5 million in revenue increases closed the $5.2 million gap. The result, as I mentioned at the outset, is a $50.2 million general fund, which is nearly $3 million lower than the 2019 adopted budget for the general fund. So, want to focus first on the expenditure reductions that we made in this budget, and we have categorized the expenditure reductions into three broad categories, the first of which is belt tightening strategies. So, when I presented the revenue forecast in August, talked about, excuse me, talked about scrubbing the revenue lines. We did a similar scrub on the expenditure lines to identify opportunities for savings, and I'll go through some of those examples in the presentation. Personnel costs, we are achieving savings there. I had already mentioned holding seven positions vacant in 2020, and we're slowing the rate of growth in the future. Again, I'll provide more examples a few slides up. And then we are recommending a select number of service level changes also to close the gap. So, what I'm going to talk about now, again, are kind of the major themes. You'll see tomorrow night how these played out in the individual department budgets when we provide the department budget overviews. So, in terms of belt tightening strategies, the biggest, the biggest change in this category is council in the budget last year approved a number of increases in professional services account lines for one-time projects. So, these, these range from, for example, in communications, the semi-annual survey that we do, there were some professional services dollars allocated for code revisions. As those projects are wrapping up, we're capturing the savings in those professional service dollars, and in a year where there was strength in our revenues and an opportunity to grow or hold steady the budget, we might reallocate those professional service dollars to new projects. But in this time of contraction, we're capturing the savings from those professional service dollars to help balance the budget. dollars to help balance the budget.
Sorry, Councilmember Walsh?
So Beth, first of all, I very much appreciate the way that you've presented the budget with the crosswalks and showing each of these line item professional service decreases. What I would like to know as we go through this is, what I would like to know as we go through this is what that total amount is, if we can just get a summary? And then also, if there are any planned work items or strategic plan items that are getting postponed in 2020 because we're not reallocating those? Just getting a sense of what are, what are the sacrifices we're making by not reallocating those?
Councilmember Winterstein?
In the letter that accompanies the budget, it says it more simply. It talks about eliminating one-time funding for special projects in 2019. And that, the way that that's phrased makes me wonder how that affects expenditure reductions in 2020. We're eliminating one-time funding for special projects in 2019. I don't, so I'm, so I'm struggling with understanding how a project that was funded and with, with professional, for professional services in 2019, how that actually can be viewed as an expenditure reduction in 2020?
Because we won't be spending those dollars in, first of all, I think the letter, I think it's, that probably should have said 2020, although I don't have it in front of me, so I'm, as I'm hearing you describe it, it sounds like that might be referring to 2020. But that aside, we're not spending those dollars in, we won't be spending those dollars in 2020, and we're capturing that savings to help close the budget gap. In another year, you might say, okay, you finished this project, take on another project or reallocate it to something else. And we're not reallocating those dollars. We're saying that, you know, that, that project is done and we're capturing the savings and lowering the bottom line budget as a result.
Okay, maybe it's just a nuance of words, but the idea, since we only allocate and appropriate on a per annum basis, to think that, since we haven't approved anything for 2020, that, that's actually an expenditure reduction. It's, it's just, no, we did not approve that spend. It's not already, it's not a reduction in my mind, just, it's just a perspective.
Okay, so we also, as part of our scrubbing of the expenditure lines, similar to what we did on the revenue side, is we looked at budgeted expenditures and actual spend patterns. And we identified a number of areas where the budgeted amounts are higher than what the traditional spending levels are. So we captured, we captured those savings. Some of these are in miscellaneous accounts like travel and training and things of that nature. But there is one more substantive one that I want to point out that falls under this category. And that is, we are capturing $756,000 of money that was sitting in non-voted debt serv, the non-voted debt service fund that is not needed. They're general fund dollars that were sitting in the non-voted debt service fund that were sweeping back into the general fund. And how this came about is that in 2018, there was an assumption in the budget that there was going to be a bond sale. And so when the 2018 budget was adopted, the budget allocated sufficient money in that, that non-voted debt service fund to pay the debt service on those bonds that were never sold. So that money has been sitting in the non-voted debt service fund since. And so we're capturing that savings and returning that money back to, as I like to call it, the mother fund, the general fund. So that's, that's the kind of review, an example of the kind of review we were doing on this. Similarly, this year, the non-voted debt service line includes debt service costs for the bond sale that we are anticipating coming later in 2020 to support, for example, the Signal at Southeast 43rd. So we've, we've done that estimation. We're assuming that bond sale is going to go forward. I have no reason to believe it's not going to go forward. But in 2018, the city went through that exercise, that bond sale never occurred, but the, the general fund dollars that were put into that fund to support that debt service was never collected back in the general fund.
Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you. Also, referring back to the letter, one of the sections talks about salary and benefit lines in excess of actual needs. It was one of the expenditure reduction descriptions. Salary and benefit lines in excess of actual needs. What does that mean?
I've got a slide on that.
Oh, okay, I was looking for that. I'm trying to look ahead to see if you're going to answer the questions that I have. I didn't see that one.
Yeah, no, there, I've got a whole section of slides on personnel costs, and I think it's actually the next one. So if there are no more questions on this slide, I can jump ahead to the next slide. Does that work? Okay. So thank you for that introduction, personnel costs. This is, this is another area where we, we scrubbed the budgeted amounts and we found a number of technical issues with how salaries and budget, salary and benefits were budgeted in 2019 that were not matching what the actual need was. And I will give you one example of what we identified as we were scrubbing the budgets. So we, we budget medical costs, medical benefit costs for vacant positions. And what we identified as we were building the salary and benefit budget for 2020 is that the benefit assumptions on these vacant positions was actually higher than what the maximum amount for our, our medical benefits was. So for each vacant position, it was budgeted at $6,000 higher than what the actual need was. And in the 2019 budget, there were 23 vacant positions. So you take $6,000, multiply it by 23 vacant positions, and you start to have real money. So this is another example, you know, I can't explain how it happened, but similar to the revenue review where we went through and, and looked line by line of, you know, is this, are these assumptions real? We identified some of those issues on the medical side. So that, Councilmember Winterstein, is what that sentence in the letter was referencing. In addition, we looked at, the city has an education merit program where we provide a small increase to employees that further their education in, in conformance with city policy. They can be eligible to up to 2%. So what the city has traditionally been doing is allocating the 2% to all of the department budgets as a percentage of their, of their salaries. What we found in analyzing the budget trends is that there is participation in the program, but it is not to the equivalent of 2% on all of the salaries. So we looked at the traditional spend level and we realigned and captured the savings to mimic what is actually, what we're actually seeing in the workplace. And to quantify that, we had $308,000 budgeted for the general fund in 2019 for this purpose. And, actually, I'm sorry, I'm giving you 2018 numbers. For 2018, we had 303. My eyes are failing. I should have my reading glasses when I'm doing this, but I haven't adjusted that. So 303,000, I apologize. But we only spent $62,000. So that's money that is not needed by the departments and was probably a variable contributing to underspend in the budgets, but for budget balancing purposes, we're realigning that and we've lowered it to $75,000 and are capturing that savings to help balance the budget.
Councilmember Ray?
So I'm going to just go a little bit on that line of thinking. Do we have an estimate for where we're going to end 2019 in terms of actuals relative to the 2019 budget?
We are working on an update to that forecast as we speak.
Yeah, because it occurs to me that, in looking through the budget, almost every department has a reduction to align budget with actual needs around miscellaneous things and then updates to personnel costs, which is also a reduction. And my kind of read on that is, we've been under, we over-budgeted last year heavily in areas of personnel and then in just general administrative costs too. And so we are sweeping and capturing those costs as part of our reductions. And so what I think we're going to see is that, and I'm anxious to see this, that our 2020 budget is not going to be significantly less than our 2019 actuals.
Potentially, yeah, potentially. And, and what this means is we're going through, and I think this is a good exercise, that we're going through and, and truing things up. What has happened recently, although to a lesser extent in 2018 than years before, but there has been significant underspend in the amount that has been budgeted in each year, and that's, that's contributed to the growth of fund balance. But what we're, what we're saying now is, we've got to get, you know, our financial challenges are such that we've got to get far more precise in, in how we're allocating dollars. And so what it will likely mean in 2020 is that we've got less flexibility. We won't be generating that level of underspend or have less flexibility to respond to unexpected, unexpected changes. We might have to come back for more budget amendments. But, you know, there is, there is, you know, it's, it's kind, like, truth in budgeting is, you know, you're allocating what an actual need is. And, you know, we'll be holding departments accountable to living within those needs. So it's...
Yeah, I just think if we look historically at the budgets, we, we historically underrun because we budget very conservatively. And I think right now, what I'm seeing you're doing is truth in budgeting, I think that's a good word, and we're starting to true them up and creating better estimates of what it's going to cost to run this, this organization than we've had historically, where we've been, we have had the luxury of very conservative budgeting and then being able to underrun our budgets quite easily. So I think this is, this is good, but a lot of what we're seeing in terms of our budget reduction, I believe, is really truing up to 2019 actuals.
Councilmember Hunt?
A quick question on the education merit. So am I correct that employees that were eligible previously for this merit, you're not making a change to that program eligibility? It's, it's just better, a better estimate on the amount that's spent?
Correct, correct. Okay, I mentioned a few slides earlier that we are freezing seven vacant positions as part of the 2020 budget. In the middle of this slide, you will see a list of those positions. And this does represent 3% of our total FTEs and will generate $707,000 in savings to the general fund. And then I want to pivot a little bit...
I think we have a, I'm sorry, I think we have a question first. Councilmember Winterstein?
What were you going to pivot to?
I was going to pivot to the things below the box there.
Okay, so before we pivot...
Okay.
And you gave the amount, what was that amount?
From the vacant positions?
Yes.
707,000 savings to the general fund, and then there are some of its cost allocated, so some savings also accrues to the other funds.
I noted again in the letter, it does say that in determining which positions to hold vacant, that suggests to me that there were more than seven to select from.
Yes, there are more than seven. There's natural turnover in, in positions within the city. So it was looking at the ones that were vacant and are these ones, the ones that are vacant now and are these ones that we can hold vacant into the future? Or are some of the current vacant positions ones that we need to fill? So for example, we've had turnover in our dispatch unit. We're not recommending holding those vacant, we're recommending filling those positions. So it was looking at organizationally, could this, could the organization afford to hold these positions vacant? Or are the positions that are vacant ones that the administration felt were essential that we need to continue to fill?
Okay, so now I see in here that three, four of these positions are in development services. Now, again, you might have in your presentation later on, and I may have missed it, that more information about that other revenue category in your briefing back in August or whenever, you get, we went into a lot more detail. And, and that is, and you had it at a high number here earlier in terms of, in terms of revenues, that that other category, a lot of it's departmental related, and one of them is associated with development services, has to do with building permits and whatnot. And actually, that number in terms of revenue is forecasted to be the most significant decrease, almost $3 million below a previous number. So I have some of those details. So I'm reading that not only are we forecasting this drop in revenue from fees and everything, we're also saying, you know, we don't even need the staff. So I think, I think what you're telling us that in our pipeline, when it probably comes to development, there just isn't very much. And we also may be seeing that in terms of the amount of sales tax that we've collected and are forecasting. I'm triangulating these three things. We don't need the staff, we're not going to get as much in permitting, and oh, by the way, we're getting a lot less in sales tax for construction.
Yeah, and that's something that maybe we can tease out in a later present, well, I'm not going to say maybe. We will tease that out in a later presentation because, yes, it is influencing our sales tax numbers. Sales tax derived from the construction sector is, is down and continues to be down. We just got the data for July and construction sales tax is down 17% from July of 2018. We're also seeing in our property tax numbers, and I'm giving you a preview now, I'm not going to be able to, I don't have the details tonight, but we're going to come back on the 21st with it. When you look at our property tax, separate from bank capacity, we're putting that aside, property tax can grow 1% plus new construction each year. Traditionally, in recent years, that new construction has been valued, I'm going off of memory here, I think in the $200,000 to $300,000 range. What we're seeing for 2020 or 2020 property tax, based on preliminary information we've seen from the King County assessors, is, I believe, that's more in the 67% range, new construct, property tax derived from new construction. So we are seeing, we are seeing changes in the construction sector that are influencing multiple parts of the budget. And we can, we can tee that up more comprehensively and with, with more specific data than what I'm giving you now, but I'm, I'm giving you kind of the thumbnail sketch of what we're seeing generally in terms of the trends. And you're absolutely right, there, there are changes happening in the construction.
So great, now I have a two-part ask for you, and they're both related to...
So I answer your question and then I get two more now?
No, no, you answered my question. And so I want to get a better idea of this, I'll call it a trend, how much of it was directly because we had a moratorium and how much of it is looking forward and forecasting any potential slowdown due to what we did as a result of the moratorium? We, we put a lot more regulation in place to get what we want. So I'd very much be interested in learning, Heike, learning more about this trend, is it isolated to us? How much of it, help me understand how well it may or may not correlate to the moratorium and what, not just during that time while there was, but also, if at all possible, if we have any evidence about some of what we implemented may be impacting this aspect as well.
Councilmember, oh, sorry. Can you take that as a, add that to the to-do list?
Yes, it is, yes, it's on the to-do list.
Councilmember Walsh?
So for me, one of the big policy questions of the budget is this idea of... So for me, one of the big policy questions of the budget is this idea of what's actually savings as far as reduced expenditures and what's just delayed saving now and we're going to have to spend later. And my concern with using temporarily vacant positions as expenditure reductions is one of the policy questions that you keyed up for us, I believe in August, when you were talking about, you know, 1.9 million reduction in 2019 and 5.2 difference, is there continues to be a gap. And so my concern when we tee up expenditure reductions as temporarily freezing positions open is that we're not actually addressing the root cause and the gap. We're just pushing that down the road. And we're pushing it down the road to a later time when FTE costs are going to be more, benefits costs are going to be more, and we're going to have to play catch-up. And so I want to, for example, any of the things that, you know, that facilities remodel coordinator would have done, you know, if we have a need for that then in 2021, say, when we're remodeling some city facilities, whether we're going to have to add additional FTEs onto that in order to play catch-up for what they didn't do in 2020?
Yeah, I don't know that, these may or may not be one-time, holding these positions vacant on a one-time basis. We believe we can handle the workload now. That may continue in the future, it may not. So I don't know that I would, I would count these necessarily as one-time. Now, that facilities coordinator position, I believe, is more one-time in nature, but that does not mean that some of these others wouldn't be ongoing. So I don't know that I would completely count this as, as one-time. As we have additional budget challenges, we're always looking at our FTE levels and will be making those evaluations at that time, so.
So I ask a question, you provide a response, and now I get to ask you another question on that. Which of those, what I'd like to know then in the future is which of those do we see as more permanent and which are more temporary so that we can get a sense of how much of that $707,000 savings is actual savings versus delayed spend?
Let me chime in, because I want to go back to your original point, and that is that these are positions that are frozen, they're not, they're not deleted, they're not removed from the budget. So you're right, it is a one-year piece. And I think as we put together the budget, we're trying to come up with a balance of revenue increases, expenditure reductions. Longer-term, more effective expenditure reductions is reducing staff. And so one of the things we have built in here is some dollars to look more broadly at organizational issues. My suspect is if the council agrees with that, we will spend the next 12 months, next 10 months, looking at these more permanent reductions. And those could be keeping positions vacant in order to then eliminate the positions. There could be layoffs associated with that. There are no layoffs in this budget, and I think the staff and the mayor have been very conscious about that. If the council's not willing to look at this year for revenue increases, we may be coming back to yet this year with a different recommendation dealing with staffing. So I think this is a snapshot in time, but I think the larger policy question is the one you raised, it's not a permanent reduction in cost.
Then I will use this moment to chime in and say I am fully in support of the idea of doing an overall review of our expenditures and getting a sense of whether or not we are spending toward the strategic plan items that we want, or we're spending our budget in a strategic way and whether or not we should make some adjustments.
And I think this budget represents a step in that direction, but not a complete transition.
And I guess the other thing that I would add, as the administration was, was thinking this through, is that in order to achieve, you know, based on some of those pie charts that I shared with you at the outset of this presentation, there aren't, there aren't a lot of, you know, extras in this budget. And in order to take deeper reductions, either, you know, this year or in future years, if they are needed, that's not something that the administration felt like would be the best way to approach it in this fairly constrained time period that we had to close this budget gap, that wanted to give an opportunity for council to weigh in, for the community to weigh in and to have a more, you know, strategic discussion on where are the community's priorities. And there just wasn't the time to do that in this budget. And so yes, some of this is, is capturing things that are maybe one-time in nature, but maybe not to buy us time to have that discussion.
Council Deputy President Batiste.
Thank you for all of the great material and just the overview of how this is put together. It looks great and I'm able to follow it and I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into all of this so far. I wanted to pop back to education merit. I know we're talking about that there's making it representative of what's actually being spent, but is it also a benefit policy change in addition to, so if all of a sudden everybody came forward and said, hey, we then, or is it just adjusting it based on?
It is not a change to the policy. So the policy is still on the book that if you participate in furthering your education, you are eligible to up to a 2% increase. But what, what we found in looking at historical data is that the utilization rate is not, it's not, every employee is not participating. So we're actually not paying out 2% on all of our salaries, yet we're budgeting 2% on all of our salaries. So it's, it's aligning it with historical trends. Now, certainly, as you said, if all of a sudden now every employee says, sign me up, then we might have, we might, well, we would have a budget challenge, but that's not been the historical trend.
Okay, I just wanted to see if there's a policy change associated. And then just to follow up, Councilmember Winterstein, I won't repeat everything that he was talking about in terms of just looking at development services, looking at, I guess the way that I'm looking at is level of services and just understanding how all of these are coming together as we're talking about this, because that really sticks out to me in terms of one, one department and, and what we're looking at in terms of holding, holding back on those positions.
Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. Beth, this is an area I've always, every year I think I got it, then I don't really. And I've never seen the word freezing used before, so you've thrown me another curve. But I know that there are, we have positions and then we have, then we authorize kind of funding those positions. And to me, it was, it was, it was one thing to say we have a position, it was another thing to say it was funded. What is freezing? An unfunded position or a funded position we're just not going to fill? So in other words, if we fund it, it means we have to budget for it?
Yeah, if I'm understanding your correction, I would say both. It is, it is a position that is currently authorized in 2019, currently funded in 2019, that is currently vacant in 2019, that we are saying will remain vacant in 2020, and therefore we are going to capture the savings from holding that position vacant. Another way that, that you, that sometimes this will be, that would be, you would just cut the position. You would eliminate the FTE authority. But again, a little bit on this, you know, spanning short-term, long-term, as we do this critical services review, felt like we needed to retain the FTE authority but capture the savings.
So that challenges me, because I think you just said that, yes, you must approve funding for this position. Well, I'm just telling you, we're not going to spend it. So it'll be in the spend plan, but we're going to freeze it?
No, we've captured the savings. So the appropriation authority that you will be granting to the general fund and the departments is not funding these positions.
Okay, then, so freezing is a word, that's the word that threw me a little bit. I think if you would have said, current vacant positions, we're not requesting to fund them in 2020, that would have, that would have been, I would have got that.
Okay, we could change, we could change the phraseology.
Authorized but not funded.
Exactly.
Authorized but not.
Authorized but not, okay. Because I was worried there was like another twist on this that I didn't understand.
No twist, no twist.
Some communities do add a twist, but I don't really want to get into that. Authorized but not funded.
Thank you.
A no-twist budget. Yeah, okay. Okay, so I will then go to the bulleted items below the chart here. And this is, what I'm going to talk about here is less savings and more the concept of avoided costs. And this budget is slowing, some of the recommendations we are making in the budget is slowing down the rate of growth of personnel costs so that our future expenditure growth rate will come down. And this category of expenses is, is first of all COLA, which is a year-by-year decision. But this year, we've traditionally approved, authorized a COLA that is somewhat aligned with CPI, with inflation, which right now is, is above 2%. This year for COLA, we are recommending a 1% COLA in recognition of the financial challenges that the city is facing. So that will lower the base upon which future salary will grow.
Councilmember Winterstein.
And that 1% represents how much cost?
It is about, about $72,000, not including benefits, and that's just for the non-represented employees. It does not include the represented employees. Then the class comp study that you heard a report on recently is recommending that the new salary schedule that the city consider change the steps between, oh, thank you, change the steps, the percentage between steps from 5% now to 3%. Again, that will lower the rate of growth on salary costs in future years. And we did an estimate and believe that that will generate about $158,000 of savings over three years by, by lowering the, the percentage rate of growth between the steps. So again, not savings this year, but lowering the rate of growth, a cost avoidance strategy.
Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. You just quoted the three-year savings. By the way, that, that class and comp study information we got, you know, not long ago was very comprehensive, very insightful. I felt like I understood that, but I don't remember all of the details, at least not this evening. In fact, by implementing that, the question in front of us, we are actually then would be looking at an otherwise higher total salary outlay in 2020 because of some adjustments. Am I remembering that correctly?
Yes, so it, on an individual level, some people's salaries are going down, some people's salaries are going, on the whole, most people are getting increases.
And it's a net increase of?
I don't have that number off the top of my.
150?
150.
That's what I remember.
Thank you, I found a friend.
Councilmember Ray.
But, but you're correct that this, it's more of a longer-term impact on the budget over time with the smaller.
Seems like the ROI is three years.
Sorry?
She said over three years, the decrease will be 150. We start with a 150 increase in the first year, so.
Councilmember Ray.
So I've raised this before, but I'm wondering if there's a way for us, and I understand moving from the five-step scale to the 11-step scale, that makes perfect sense. I understand the long-term implications of that. But I'm looking for a way that we could stage in these transitions instead of doing them all on the 1st of January. There's a, and I understand the limitations in salary tables, but is there a way for us to create a new salary table that is a composite of both of the current tables so that, for instance, we would give people pay increases to their, to the new 11-step scale on their anniversary date instead of at the beginning of the year? So I just want you to think about how to do that, because, you know, just assuming kind of a normal distribution across the year of anniversary dates, that would save us about half of that. Something to ponder for you.
Yes, yes, something to ponder. We will add it to the list. Okay, and then the last thing I wanted to touch on in this category is medical benefit costs. Traditionally, the city and frankly, other entities have seen medical benefit costs increase at a rate greater than inflation, often substantially greater than the rate of inflation. Our experience has been more in the 8% range. This year, our medical benefit costs are increasing at 2%. So again, that's, that's lowering the base upon which future, future increases will be captured. This, just to give you a peg, and this is not savings, this is cost avoidance, that the difference between the 2% growth rate that we're seeing this year and an 8% growth rate is equivalent to about $240,000. So not an insignificant sum of money.
Councilmember Walsh.
Why?
It is based on utilization primarily, that we've in recent years had, had, and we're working, you, this was one of your, we're working on a more complete response, but in recent years, we've had some plan members that have had some, some sizable and serious medical issues and that, that has, that experience has decreased for 2019. Now, would that go, you know, in the other direction? Yes, absolutely. But for this year, it is some good news in terms of the medical plan.
That was going to be my next question. Is that a trend or is that just potentially something from this individual time? So that's good to know. On the COLA idea, I'm, I think I had also teed this up, and a question is, is there a policy behind that?
Yeah, and that we are working on that response also. In fact, I was working on that response over the weekend. So you'll, this will be part of what you receive on, on Friday. There is no, there is not a policy. Our practice has traditionally been to have it loosely pegged around the CPI rate, but it's not a fast and firm policy. You will find many other jurisdictions do actually have a formal policy, but the city of Issaquah does not.
You're killing it with these responses, because that was going to be my next question. What do other cities do? So thank you, Beth.
You gave me a little bit of a preview, so I had time to think about it in advance, yes. Okay, so are there any more questions on this slide? Okay, so now I want to talk about, I mentioned that we have a small number of service level changes reflected in the budget. And the three that I want to highlight here are returning community center and pool hours to the pre-2019 levels. So in 2019, when it appeared that there was health in the revenues, these hours were expanded and we're recommending as part of the 2020 proposed budget, that we return those hours back to the pre-2019 levels. What this means is that the community center will open an hour later in the morning rather than opening at 5:00 AM. It will open at 6:00 AM. And they will both be closed for drop-in use on Sundays, still available or available for rental, for private use on Sundays, but for drop-in use will be, will be closed. And Councilmember Walsh, you asked a question of why Sundays, why not Mondays? Sundays is the lowest use day, or was that, I'm sorry, I'm getting my questions all mixed up. There was a question, I will not attribute it to anyone lest I get in trouble. There was a question about why Sundays and not Mondays, and Sundays are the lower use day. We have about 25 to 50 drop-ins on those days. And the other reason of why not Monday is we have programming going on in the facilities on Monday. We have to staff the facilities anyway on that day because of that, because of that programmed use. So that was why the rationale for Sunday, not Monday. In terms of total savings, these changes will generate about $37,000 worth of savings to the general fund. And then we're recommending some reductions to contra- And then we're recommending some reductions to contracts for service and the community fund grants. The administration felt that if we're taking reductions to overall city services, that some of that, some of those reductions need to be, to be spread to the recipients of those contracts and grants.
Councilmember Winterstein.
Do we have the details for the reduction in contract for services and the fund grants?
We do, and I can rattle some of it off, although I'm going to regret not having glasses here. But I can rattle some of that off, or we can provide it in writing.
I would like to see it in writing. And just start with the contract for services and name the organizations that we contract, Rick.
I will, so the, I believe this is, this may not be completely exhaustive, we'll need to follow up with you, but we're reducing the contributions to the Issaquah History Museum, Friends of Issaquah Salmon Hatchery, Leadership Eastside, and the Chamber of Commerce Fourth of July event. And the savings there is $18,354. So it represents overall about 10%, a 10% reduction.
Okay, so, and I, but that's not all the contracts that we have.
I don't believe, we can get you, we'll need to get you a list. I don't have that here with me.
Okay, and my ask is...
And then the community grants are separate. Sorry to interrupt.
I'll get to that in a second.
Okay.
Especially for the contracts for service, I guess this could apply to community grants as well. And it does say, and I know you made a reference to that, you were ready, you had that comment, because as it says in the letter, "As the city takes reductions to its department budgets in response to the projected budget shortfall, the proposed budget looks to these organizations to make similar reductions." And I just, I don't know, I just think that that's an unfortunate statement. There's a different, they have different financial structure, they staff, they do their projects, they do their planning differently than us. We, I'm looking at here, I mean, the only kind of, you know, we're cutting back some hours on the pool, we're not filling open positions, so maybe some people are going a little bit further. But, you know, beyond that, I'm not seeing a lot of pain that the city is experiencing. And I think, given the size and the dependency and the importance of some of these contracts for service and the fund grants, what they mean to these organizations is in proportionate, I mean, much greater pain than actually what we're inflicting upon ourselves. I just think that that, it's an unfortunate way for us to look at that. So, and so that's why some more of those details, I think, will be very important. I know that there's capacity building, there is training, there's infrastructure, and those are all nice benefits. But, you know, I'm, I don't, you know, we've got some nice optimization going on here, but there's not a lot of rollback of, to things that we're actually feeling. So I just wanted to say that for the record, that I just don't think we should look at it as make similar reductions. I don't think they're similar, they're not one-for-one.
Okay, so now we're going to pivot to, to the revenue strategies that are included in the budget. And as I mentioned at the outset, the budget assumes $2.5 million of revenue increases from the strategies I'm going to describe here. And they include banked property tax capacity, increased utility tax rates, parks fees, and then other revenue opportunities. And what I'd like to talk about here is the other revenue opportunities, because I don't have an individual slide for it, so I'm going to just cover it here. And this is, this is an amalgamation of different changes on the revenue side. First of all, we allocate general fund costs to other funds within the city so that they pay their fair share of the costs that they're utilizing. So for example, the finance budget is, is cost allocated across the city. We have not traditionally cost allocated though all of the costs that are eligible. So for example, human resources costs have not been cost allocated, our central communications costs have not been cost allocated. So as part of this budget, we are cost allocating those costs, and that is bringing in revenue to the general fund from, from these other non-general fund revenue sources. In addition, we are recognizing revenues from grants. For example, we're receiving a grant from King County for the senior center that we are recognizing as a revenue. And then King County recently passed its King County Parks Levy, which funds parks in King County, or King County-operated parks. As part of that levy this, this time around, they authorized some of that revenue to be allocated to cities to offset maintenance of their costs. And so our share from that is $100,000. That is another example of another revenue that we are recognizing as part of the budget.
Councilmember Ray.
Going forward, it would be very helpful for me, for those departments that are receiving either other revenues or other revenues, be it either internal or grant revenue, to have that aligned with their projected budget changes. For instance, if I'm seeing an increase in a particular budget area, it would be nice if I could see the offsetting anticipated grant that goes with it, so I can say, oh, yeah, I get it, we're doing this increase here because we're going to get this grant, and so it's a net-net nothing. Otherwise, it looks like an increase, and it's just harder to wrap my, my head around those.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein.
The numbers regarding cost allocation are confusing to me. You, just a moment ago, before you moved on to the next topic, I didn't get my question in time, you, you talked about, you talked about the cost allocation. And I'm assuming it's like, maybe some of these, whether it be HR, IT, or something, services that are offered maybe to the enterprise funds or something like that. So it's like same people, kind of doing the same job, except we're going to pay for some of them out of the enterprise fund. So that expenditure I would expect to go up. However, in the overall, in the, in the budget document, in that other category, there is a breakdown, and the budget calls for 1.3 million in transfers in in 2020, which exactly matches the 2019 projection, which is actually less than the 2019 adopted, the 2018 actual is around 1.2, and the 2017 actual was around 1.6. So I don't really see how that's much of a savings to the general fund. It's not, it's like, hasn't changed at all.
Yeah, it depends on how, well, first of all, you might recall from the revenue presentation that there were actually some overstatements in some of those transfers in, in the 2019 budget. And we can, we can go back and cross that, walk that for you. But also, some of the cost allocations are not always represented as a transfer in, but the dollars sit in those other, those other departments. So for example, some of finance costs are sitting in the utility budget for, for costs that are related to utility billing. So we can, we can provide a greater breakdown for you outside of the meeting, because I'm not going to do...
I think what you're telling me is that if we were to see a more detailed budget for these enterprise funds, we would see new lines for maybe HR, IT, that weren't there before, and they have an amount. And so the true cost is actually the sum of those between the general fund transfer in and maybe some amount from another fund.
Yeah, and we can, we can do a crosswalk for you.
Yeah, it was more of understanding the numbers that were here. I don't, I didn't understand how we're doing better cost allocation when in fact it looks about the same.
Yeah.
So that would be illuminating.
Yes, and then generally speaking, we are, we are cost allocating some additional costs for 2020. One of the, one of our work plan items for 2020 in the finance department is to do an overall look at the general cost allocation program in general, just to make sure we've, we've captured what we should be capturing, and it's just, it's overdue for a look.
Councilmember Hunt.
I missed the opportunity on the last slide, but I just wanted to echo some of what Councilmember Winterstein was saying about the, the statement having to do with, as the city takes reductions to its departmental budgets in response to the budget shortfall, we looks to organizations to make similar reductions regarding nonprofit organizations in the city. So it's, that sentence actually appears both in our cutting of the community fund as well as the contracts for services and operational support for two organizations that I don't think you mentioned, which was Issaquah Alps Trails Club as well as Friends of Lake Siamish State Park. And I would really like to make sure that, I think, the way I see it, if the city is also, we are doing this assessment of services we provide, but there are some services that our community relies on that these other organizations are better posed to provide. So I think we need to make sure that we are supporting those organizations that can do some of these services better than the city can. So I would like to make sure that regardless of what cuts we are making internally, if we can partner with organizations to make sure we meet the needs of the community, that's a better way of looking at it, and not just because we're experiencing budget, this budget issue, we expect other people to experience the same, make similar cuts. Maybe if we're experiencing this, this issue, we can look to our partners to fill some of the gaps in services. So I would just really like to look at the value provided by these and make sure that we're meeting the needs of the community.
Okay, so now I'd like to pivot towards two, not towards two, property tax, and start talking about the banked capacity issue. And before we get into banked capacity per se, is, I think all of you are aware that under Washington state law, our property tax can grow at 1% plus new construction, and the 1% is applied to the amount that was collected in the previous year. And for 2019, that 1% increase plus new construction represents, I'm sorry, the 1% increase represents $91,000, as shown on the table on the right of the chart posted on the screen. New construction is valued at $67,000. Again, Councilmember Winterstein, as I was mentioning earlier, this historically has been in excess of $200,000, and we'll get those historical numbers for you. But, so the 1% plus new construction will generate, you know, $150-ish thousand of an increase in revenues for 2020. In addition, we are recommending that we take the banked capacity that has accumulated in the years when the city did not apply the 1%. Now, the question I think you were getting at, Councilmember Winterstein, is that this $138,000 looks low relative to the overall property tax bill. How does that work? So this is one where we have spent quite a bit of time trying to unpack. These are based on numbers provided by King County. The property tax calculations in Washington state are exceptionally complex, the laws are complex. The King County Assessors Office is doing calculations every year about the maximum allowable tax rate versus what we've actually levied, and the difference is, is that banked capacity. So the reason why it is not higher, yes, you're counting the five years, it was 2009 to 2013, is when calculating property tax, and we will, we'll map this out in a slide for the 21st, you take new construction, you take 1% plus new construction, and then in any given year, there are going to be refunds. If someone contests their property tax bill, there is a refund. And that is captured in the current year levy, but then the subsequent year levy, you need to back out that, that refunding. What we found, and the numbers match up, and we can provide this even in writing before the 21st, is that the city, since I believe it was 2015, did not back out that new construction calculation. So we have been actually eating into banked capacity since 2015 because there was an error in how that was calculated. And so we'll provide that information. We, you know, agree that this number was not making sense, and we've spent quite a bit of time over the last couple of weeks of like, how can that be? And, you know, I've been saying, like, I'm going to get a question about this. So we, we, we did some digging in, and that's, that's what we found. We will, we can provide the data in a written response, and then we can also speak to it when we present the property tax on October 21st.
Thank you for that. If I may, just restate back to you what I think you said. It is, and you even used the word forgone up there, like, we, so each year, we did forego a 1% increase, and that had a dollar amount. But you said, that then gets adjusted because there may be some refunds. And then that net amount is what adds to the bank, that accumulates?
Sort of. So the refunds actually, if we had, if we had done the calculations correctly and backed, and backed out the refunds, the way we, we ended up, we ended up eating into the banked capacity by levying the 1% on a higher base than what we should have because we didn't back out those refunds.
Okay, so the basis of our 1% was actually too high?
Technically, yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes, so I mean, we were...
So this is what's left after correcting for that over collection?
Yes, yes.
This is what's left?
Yes.
That's why that number's so low?
Yes, so the city...
So now, does it affect specifically the rate that we're going to calculate and proposing to change?
It, I mean, the banked capacity will, on an overall basis, it's just going to be a little bit lower because the rates that were adopted in 2015, 16, 17, 18, 19 were eaten, were eating into that banked capacity, just, it was not, it was not a deliberate decision, that it was, it was kind of a circumstantial decision in how the levy was calculated in those years.
So I appreciate the transparency. So we, so they could have actually been a little bit lower.
In previous years.
They could have been, okay. But I guess the, what I'm trying to get at is, the, to use the banked capacity would result in what levy rate compared to not using the banked capacity?
Yes, so I...
I'm sure that's in the materials, I just want to make sure we talk about it.
Yes, so, so why don't we move to the next slide where that is presented? So if the city decided to levy the banked capacity, what remains of the banked capacity, it would add roughly $10 to $11 to the average annual property tax bill for an Issaquah resident. And then the overall property tax bill for an average Issaquah resident for 2020 would be $698. This is just the Issaquah portion, this does not include the portion of your property tax that goes to the school district, to the county, to the state. This is up about almost $50 from, or around $50 from the 2019 level. So the 2019 level is $646. For 2020, if we adopted this plan, it would be $698. And then Councilmember Walsh, maybe this chart here, your question earlier about the property tax rate, this, this is playing that out and demonstrating how that, that is coming into play. So we're, we're collecting more, but because property values have been increasing, and increasing at a fairly substantial rate, the levy rate per thousand is actually going down.
Councilmember Hunt.
Does this go up and then it stays at the 1% increase into the future, or does it, is there a time limitation on this?
It becomes part of the base. So the way the property tax laws in the state of Washington is, you, you, you collect, if you collect $100 in year one, under Washington state law, you can grow that by 1%. So the next year, it would be $101, and then the year after that, it would be 102 point, you know, whatever the math. So yeah, the base gets higher, and then the 1% gets applied to that, if, if the city chose to exercise the 1%.
Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. I just want to characterize what we have here. And if you look closely, clearly, our levy rate goes down for all the reasons, and if you don't understand it, I get it, but the levy rate goes down, and it has been. And one of the things that has meant that is the, the city portion of everybody's property tax has not grown commensurate with their assessed valuation.
Correct.
It's always, the assessed valuation has always gone up, but our rate has always gone down as well because we've had to. And so this proposal basically, for the first type, says, you know, the city portion is going to grow commensurate with your assessed valuation change because the rate is essentially the same between 19 and 18, and 20. .792 versus .797.
So, so I just want to point out that, if I understand this right, I think I do, So I just want to point out that, if I understand this right, I think I do, this is super important because, you know, there's a perception out there that government just grows as fast as it can and, you know, gobbles up all the money on the table. And this levy rate, having been involved in a number of school district levies, and, you know, that number typically, a government entity, you know, once you get to a certain number, you stay at that number forever. And so this is just, as the community considers the things that we are looking at, you know, we talked earlier about the expenditures per capita and the revenues per capita. And, you know, as the community looks at that picture, one of the pieces, we're looking at various revenue mechanisms that we may or may not implement and various expenditure mechanisms. But this is super important, right? Because this means that, you know, as that flat per capita revenues have gone up, if we had been keeping the same fraction coming from private, coming from private property tax, that mill rate would have stayed the same. So this is very, very, very important. So thank you for putting this up.
So next, I want to pivot toward, I keep thinking towards, utility, the utility tax rate proposal that is included in the proposed budget. The city does, or the proposed budget does recommend establishing a uniform 6% utility rate to generate $1.9 million of general fund revenue. And the impact on the average Issaquah taxpayer is estimated at about $14.10 a month. And what is being proposed specifically is the rates, or the utilities highlighted in light green at the bottom of this chart, raising those rates to 6% so that there is a uniform 6% utility tax across all of the utility categories that are eligible to be charged. And the reason for this is, first of all, as we look at nearby cities, that many jurisdictions that are charging a utility tax are charging a uniform rate across all of the utilities. So this would put us in line with nearby cities. Excuse me. It also puts our utility tax rates in line with comparable cities. So we did a review of 16 cities in the region, and this is highlighted in the revenue white paper that you received on the 24th. Our utility tax rates for cable, water, sewer, and stormwater are below the sample median of those representative 16 cities. So this would put us in line with our peer cities. And we've also talked this evening about various tax rates and declining, or, you know, as the case may be, increasing. You may recall from the revenue forecast that utility tax is a revenue stream that's actually been declining, and it's been declining because telephone usage, electricity usage, electricity costs has been declining. So the taxes that we've been deriving from that has been dropping. So this, in part, equalizes, you know, the contributions that people have been making over time. So I'll pause there.
Councilmember Winterstein?
Just so people know where I'm coming from, striving for uniform rates, it's not a basis for policymaking, uniform rates. Comparable with other cities, in this case, no, that's not a basis for policymaking either. I love symmetry as much as anybody. I love uniformity as much as anybody. But, you know, this is, I just don't think those are very good bases. This would affect every property owner that gets water, and, because they get the same bill charged for sewer and stormwater, it's indiscriminate, it's indiscriminate of any of their property values, income levels, or anything like that, whether you're in the top 0.1% or the bottom 10%. If you use seven cubic feet of water, you're going to pay the same increase. So it's a very, it's not, and it's not even spread across other, like a sales tax as we're debating for, potentially for the transportation funding in the future. It's not even spread across, you know, visitors and other shoppers in the area. It's just property owners within here, within Issaquah. I just, I'm dead set against doing this.
Councilmember Ray?
So I have a slightly different perspective. One, I think, is the median, sample median is a fair comparison. I don't have a problem with that. I guess I'm kind of binding up on an increase in the water, sewer, and stormwater tax at the same time that we're contemplating for the rate study. And I know it's a separate discussion, but we're contemplating a 50% increase in water rates over the next few years. And I think we need to have these discussions linked because from a citizen's perspective and a rate payer's perspective, it's just going to look like yet another increase in my water bill. And I don't think that that's something that we necessarily could and should do. And I would like us to take a much more serious look at the rate study and where we're going with our water system in light of the fact that we're talking about yet another increase in the cost of my water bill.
So Chris, Councilmember Ray, I want to pull that apart a little better, understand it a little bit better. It sounds like what you're suggesting is sort of a fundamentally different way of going about this aspect of the budget, if I'm hearing you correctly.
Yeah, I can't get excited about water rate, utility tax increase at the same time that I'm staring at a very significant rate increase associated with the recently completed rate study. And it really just comes down to, I think that people already in this town feel like they're spending too much on water, be that true or not, relative to others. But I think we need to be able to address and say, you know, you're not going to be out of line in terms of the total cost of water in Issaquah versus Bellevue, or Redmond, or Kirkland. And I know we often talk about doing comparatives and saying, you know, how do we compare? And when we did the rate study, we did a great job of comparing where we were this year in terms of our communities, but we didn't do a good job of looking at three years from now after we implement rate increases to say, what are we going to, how are we going to compare to these other cities at that point? And we didn't do it in terms of, how are we going to compare to these other cities if we also increase by 4% our water tax and by 6% our sewer and stormwater tax? So I'm really, you know, similar to my esteemed colleague to my left here, I'm really concerned about, you know, how much are we going to make people pay for these services?
So I just, so what you are suggesting is that we look at the combined effects of the rate increase and the tax increase together?
Yes, sir.
So before I get to Councilmember Hunt, I want to ask Director Goldberg, if that were the will of the council, would we be able to pivot during the budget conversation to pursuing that direction?
We can gather that information and present it comprehensively, and then we'll work with city administrator Bob Kowits to determine at what point in our schedule to bring that back to you. And, you know, I think we could provide some responses in writing in advance of that discussion.
So it's possible. So then I want to ask my fellow council members, what is their will going forward? Whether they want to pursue that direction or whether they want to continue in looking at the tax separate from the rate increase? I'd sort of like to poll everybody, get their sense.
Together.
Sorry? Councilmember Hunt?
Together for me. I think looking at them together makes sense to me.
Councilmember Winterstein?
Yeah, they're multi-dimensional. We need to look at, one, in terms of the budget. We have to look in the other ones and whether or not we want to achieve our goals for the water, you know, implement the water system plan. And so we have to look at both, but it's, and I think we already are, so I don't, it's pretty easy to add the numbers together and know what the impact is on a household.
So that's a yes?
We're doing both. We are doing both. So I'm not, I guess I don't understand the question, honestly. We are looking, this is a tax and the other one is a rate. We just want to bring the rates in and say, here's the total household impact? Is that it? We can do that.
Councilmember Ray, would you like to address the question regarding your proposal?
I think we need to look at them in total. I think we, you know, fundamentally, if we're saying to maintain city services, we need to include a tax, and to implement this version of a water system plan, we need to do a rate increase, I think we need to look at that in terms of the impact it's having on the people who are consuming our products. And I'm just concerned about the impact that that could have and particularly on some different communities that have a harder time paying their utility bills. So I want to look at it. I want to look at it not at where we are today, but where we're going to be in three years when we finish the rate study. And I want to look how, if we're on the right track. And I think, you know, it's really hard because you want to get on a track, and you want to drive down that track, and you want to get stuff done. But I think we also need to say, is this the right, are we headed in the right direction? And does this still make sense? And this just happens to bring it to the forefront.
So can I paraphrase that to say, you don't sort of want to do a thumbs up or a thumbs down on tax rates until you can also look at the associated fees with the same, for the same service?
That was great paraphrasing. Thank you.
Councilmember Walsh?
It's such a big portion of revenue increases, both for the city and then also costs for individuals, that, yeah, I think we do need to look at it together.
Councildeputy President Batiste?
I agree. As we're looking at this, potentially what that could mean, I think we have to look at that together to be able to speak to that. So to follow up on what Councilmember Ray spoke about, I would...
I'll come back to Councilmember Winterstein?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And I support it as well. So I will thank the administration for being able to pivot on that, and I will ask that you come back and let us know the timetable for that pivot. City Administrator Bob Kowits?
So is cable television separate from that discussion?
Councilmember Ray?
I started this. I think cable television is a separate discussion.
Okay. There you go. Thank you. All right.
Understood otherwise.
Yeah, and I think, honestly, though, I think the cable television revenue source is going to go the same way as the telephone revenue source went too. So, I mean, I think we need to factor that in, not maybe this year, but as we go forward.
And we are. I think just for the simplicity of the discussion, now that you have prompted, if we can have cable off to the side, that would be helpful. Thank you.
That's good clarity. And there were other questions beyond Councilmember Ray's suggestion, and I think that's, we're at Councilmember Hunt.
It's more of a comment. So part of what Councilmember Ray was talking about too is an assessment of the services provided. And for me, that telephone usage is going down is in no way a reason that we should be increasing the stormwater tax, for example, but that's on the why the utility tax increase slide. So for me, the framing doesn't make a lot of sense on these. However, I think, you know, stormwater infrastructure is extremely important to our environment, and it's something that we need to maintain, and we need to maintain our infrastructure. So there is an argument to be made, I think, but I disagree with the framing. And so I think looking at the costs of these, the services provided and the costs would also...
So to be clear, this is not related to the costs of those services. This is a revenue to the general fund. So the utility rates themselves are covering the costs of those programs. What we're talking about here is a general fund revenue source, which is a tax on those utilities. So for example, we are taxing electricity and natural gas. That's revenue coming to the general fund that has nothing to do with what Puget Sound is providing, similar to telephone. So it has nothing to do with the service, the service of those utilities. It's a tax, similar to a sales tax. It's a use fee, a usage tax that happens to be applied to utilities.
Okay. I guess I just don't then, I don't, I still don't think I agree with the framing that because people, you know, the last bullet point as far as because one of our usages is going down, then we should be...
Maybe I'll provide an analogy, which is like, gas tax is a revenue, not one that we're a big recipient of, but the state is seeing declines in gas taxes, people are moving towards hybrid vehicles, electric vehicles, and there was just an additional car tab tax because the needs haven't changed, but the revenues have gone down because utilization rates have changed. This is analogous to that.
And if I may, I think as we look at the budget as a whole, we look at what opportunities there are. And so, yes, we're saying that there are some declines. That's related more to the overall budget situation than it is why we're suggesting the changes in this time for these particular ones. It's just we only have so many ways to generate revenue. And when we look at some of our communities generating the state maximum, we feel it's at least a prudent policy option to put forward, to consider it.
Councilmember Winterstein? Councilmember Walsh?
So talking about those opportunities in the budget, utility taxes is an opportunity to generate a large increase in revenue. But there are other ways that we could have looked at it. And I know one of the ways that we were exploring earlier on was business and occupation tax and other things. So I think it's also important to, when we kind of talk about this in the community realm, is to say, yes, this is the way that the administration is proposing, but there were also other ways that we turned down, just as another conversation.
Yeah. And so we do touch on that in the revenue memo, or the revenue white paper that you received on the 24th, in terms of why utility tax and why not BNO tax. First of all, I'll back up and say, you know, Issaquah, and I think I said this at the forecast presentation, Issaquah is fortunate that we do have revenue tools at our disposal that we have not been using. Some jurisdictions don't have that flexibility. They're using all of their revenue tools. We have some options. That's not to say they're easy options. They're not easy decisions to make, but we do have tools in the toolbox. In terms of why utility tax and why not BNO tax, there, we looked at two broad options on the BNO tax. The first of which would be to take it to the maximum allowable under state law, which is 0.002 on gross receipts. And that would generate about $3.1 million of revenue, which is more money than we need to balance the budget at this time. So that felt like an overreach. If, the other option that we looked at was the Ad Hoc Finance Committee, I believe it was in 2014, maybe 2015, was looking at adjustments to the BNO rate and recommended taking the rate to uniformly 0015 on gross receipts, and the council implemented it a little bit differently than that uniform rate. So we looked at what would we be able to generate if we took it to that 0.00515 rate, and that would generate $882,000. So that was less than what we needed. So the utility tax felt like it was in that spot. But certainly, the BNO tax is another revenue option that is at the city's disposal. It's just not one that we put forward as a recommendation as part of the 2020 proposed budget.
From my perspective, looking at this, when comparing Issaquah's utility tax rates to other cities, and then Issaquah's BNO tax to other cities, or BNO tax is very similar to other cities that are charging a BNO tax. And so I wouldn't want to go up to a maximum rate because that would put us out of line from the other communities. Whereas here, this really represents a savings to somebody who moves to Issaquah, that they're paying less on tax rates, and this would bring us up to... paying less on tax rates. And this would bring us up to an average of the cities around us. So my perspective.
Okay. So now, moving on to parks fees, which is another source of revenue for the general fund in the 2020 proposed budget, looked at changes to select park fees, including imposing our, right now, there is a discount provided to non-resident users of the pool. And this would, would take away that discount and, and the general fund subsidy that is provided to non-resident users of the pool. Many jurisdictions charge different, differentiated rates to residents versus non-residents. So this would be in line with those trends. We're also looking at increased charges for the senior gold pass. Currently, the gold pass is $25 a year for participants. It's equivalent to $2 per month. What we would be looking at with this change in fees would be increasing the resident rate to $10 per month, or 20, $120 a year, and non-residents to $12 a month, or $144 per year. And this is, this is still very affordable compared to nearby jurisdictions. A review of nearby jurisdictions, something like this would cost $78 a month at, in nearby jurisdictions. So this is an increase. It is certainly an increase. It will be impacted by people, but we feel like this is very much still an attractive rate compared to our nearby cities. And then lastly, we're increasing select community center fees. So as we looked at these fee increases, we were looking at what are nearby communities doing. We were looking at market trends. It's also important to note that many of these fees haven't changed in 20 years. So they've been, they've been holding steady for, for quite some time. And given our, our budget challenges, felt like this was an area we needed to put forward as a proposal in the 2020 proposed budget.
Council, uh, oh, photo finish. Council Deputy President Batiste?
Uh, so the, was that the senior gold pass that you were giving the, the annual rate on? Could you?
Yes.
I'm just making sure I'm understanding that.
Yeah. So I can repeat those numbers if you would like.
Could you do that for me?
Yeah. So currently, we charge $25 a year for the gold pass.
Okay.
And that translates to roughly about $2 per month. What we're proposing in the budget would be to increase the annual fee from the current 25 to 120 a year, which would change on a per monthly basis from $2 per month to $10 per month for residents. And then for non-residents, it would be, instead of $10 per month, it would be $12 per month, or $144 a year. And we can provide this in writing as well, because I'm throwing a lot of numbers at you.
So those are the resident, non-resident passes, but I was just particularly asking about the senior gold pass.
Yeah, that, that, that's the gold pass.
That's part of that. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Ray?
All right. I'm going to be a Grinch here. We do a lot of programs, other than the pools, that we don't differentiate between residents and non-residents. Did we look at creating a resident slash non-resident fee for any of the other programs that parks provides?
Yeah, there are. It's embedded within these proposals. There's, it's not just the pool that has resident versus non-resident.
Oh, so that first bullet is bigger than the pool? It's a pooling of the pool? With other things?
I'm, I'm going to phone a friend.
Okay.
Does she get on the microphone?
Yeah.
Yes, please. Always.
Always. Always a microphone. Jeff Watling, Parks and Recreation Director. Yeah, some clarification on the pool. So we have a resident, non-resident fee structure in all of our other parks and recreation programs. The pool was built by King County Forward Thrust Pool. This is in the memo that, that I provided you as well. We have requested and approached King County to take a condition that they put on the city when they transferred to us that didn't allow us to establish a non-resident fee. We're in process right now. The county's approved and is going to be giving us that ability to create a resident, non-resident structure at the pool that we historically haven't done.
So just to, to clarify, so on our other programs, parks programs that we have, we do have a resident slash non-resident fee structure?
Correct.
Thank you. Well done.
That's why it's so great that staff is here with us into the, into the late hours, and we appreciate it so much.
So did want to highlight that we, we do recognize that these tax and fee increases that we are talking about here do have an impact on all residents, but particularly low-income residents. And did want to highlight that we do have some programs to help mitigate some of these impacts. And the first is the city does offer a low-income senior discount on our city-run utilities. And that program currently is constructed, offers 75% off water and sewer bills, and an exemption from the stormwater fee. We, and this is eligible, people 62 years and older with income less than $44,300 are eligible. We currently have 55,000, I'm sorry, 55,000. We, I've all of a sudden grew the population of the city of Issaquah. We, we currently have 55 low-income residents enrolled. That, that sounds better, right? So, and this is something that, that we are, we are promoting to our residents. And then in addition, we're also promoting, there's a King County program to offer seniors also discounts on their property tax bills. So as the mayor has been speaking around town, she has been, she has been promoting these programs. We also offer park scholarships to people in need, not just seniors, but, but all, all segments of the population. And then as, as Office of Sustainability presented a couple of weeks ago, I believe in the context of the utility rates, we do have a 2020 work program item to look at whether there are opportunities to expand the scope of any of these programs.
Councilmember Hunt?
You mentioned that, that the Low Income Senior Discount Program Board, the water is being promoted. And so I wondered if you could elaborate, because I know when Cascade Water Lines did their assessment of these sorts of programs, Issaquah had the lowest participation. And we do only have about 50 families, and there are many more eligible families than participate.
So the mayor has, as she's been speaking in the community recently, over the last couple of months, has been talking about this more frequently. I believe there have been some communications in the city newsletter. And we've also talked about including an insert in future utility bill announcing the program. So yes, utilization has been low, and we do believe there are opportunities to, to, to promote this. And we're starting to do that. And we'll do, we'll do more of that in, in the foreseeable future.
Okay. Just something to keep on the radar.
And certainly, as you're out in the community also, this is something that, you know, if, if you all would like to promote, that would be great as well. Okay. So the last bit of this, we're kind of on the home stretch, is, this is, this is not an all-cuts budget. There are, there are, even as, as you're facing budget challenges, there are increased cost pressures. Some of costs that, you know, are obligations that we can't avoid, and some, some are more discretionary, but things that we've deemed important. So one of the adds to the budget is the assessment of city, citywide services. And so we've allocated $250,000 for this work in 2020. The next couple of items on the list are strategic plan items, and we'll go into strategic plan a little bit more. But we are allocating $1.2 million to the finance infrastructure investments that we've been talking about throughout the year. A bulk of this money is actually REIT dollars. One point, just over 1 million of this is REIT dollars, not general fund dollars. And about 200,000 is the general fund to support the work of the Munis reimplementation, so we can access data in a more timely, user-friendly way, among other reasons, to give you guys better access to our financial data. So that's, that's another priority. We've also allocated $75,000 to support the transportation funding package that you all have been contemplating. This would be the cost of putting it on the ballot, as well as some money for public engagement. And then as we look at some of our base budget costs, our fire contract, the cost of that has gone up by a couple hundred thousand dollars. So this accounts for that. And we've seen upward pressure on our legal services costs. So this is also allocating increased funds to support our legal services costs. And then last, we've got some personnel costs that have been changing. There's, Washington state law is increasing the minimum wage effective January 1st. So we've got some increases for minimum wage, mostly for our part-time, non-regular employees. Those are the, the employees that are earning minimum wage. And then we've also increased the funding for police overtime. We've talked about looking at, at aligning budgets with actual needs. And we talked about it earlier in the presentation to generate savings. But what we also found in that review is that police overtime expenditures have been higher than what was traditionally budgeted. So we've added, added some funds for that.
Councilmember Hunt?
There's one, in the, in the proposed strategic work plan program, there's one other one, which is long-range planning for city hall facilities.
Yeah, that's on the next slide. So, so I, oops. So that, there, there are some ads for it specifically for the strategic plan. You are correct, that is one of them. But there are also ads that were outside of the strategic plan. So that's kind of the logic behind the two slides. But right here is a summary of the ads that are supporting the strategic plan items. And then there are a series of other strategic plan initiatives that we will be taking on within existing resources. And David Fujimoto is here to provide a little bit more of an overview of that for council members before we wrap up.
Okay. I'll save my question then.
Okay. Good evening. I guess I get to carry us all the way through the late hours tonight. We did want to give a brief overview. There's a memo that's in your packet that talks about the strategic work plan for next year as well. But just wanted to jump into that a little bit to give you some additional context and details there. So as a point, a quick point of background, the citywide strategic plan really at its core is about aligning the city actions with community vision and priorities. You'll recall that we did through that process, update the overall vision, mission, guiding principles. There was a full update to all those different pieces. We covered six different priority goal areas, in the areas of mobility, growth and development, environmental stewardship, city leadership and services, and infrastructure. And then within each of those areas, we had a total of 16 different objectives. And as Wes was spoken about before, the other important piece of this was the implementation framework, because we can develop the plan, but really going about and identifying the linkages to the budgeting process and the implementation is really critical to being able to achieve that. So we'll talk a little bit about that as well.
As I mentioned, the, the implementation was really critical to this, this overall process, both in, in terms of the process leading up to the strategy and budget workshop that we held this past June, where we had worked with city council to take a look at a variety of different actions, to talk through some of those different pieces, get an early financial update and picture on what we knew at that point in time about data. I think we had had maybe four months of data in at that point for the financial update, which we later updated as we came around to, I think it was August for, either late July or August for that update. Did some work discussing those actions, and then council helped us to prioritize those different measures. The results of that, and you might recall that there was a multi-voting or dot exercise that was involved, where there was two green and five blue dots that were allocated, with the green dots really being the ones that were indicating the really high priority, the most important items, in order to give us some early directions and feedback as we started to prepare our budget and respond to what we heard from city council. So as a result of that process, there were 25 priority actions that were identified, or blue dots, if you will. And then 12 that were identified as green dots as being those that were most important. I think there, there was a question earlier about the, the process going forward, and how did that, the strategic plan inform the city's budgeting process, and where the connections were with that. As a result of that meeting, there was direction given to the departments to incorporate all of the strategic actions within the budget proposals. And because we knew that there was some level of financial concern, forecast, that the, those were directed to be incorporated into city budgets, starting with a no-growth budget scenario. So that meant that departments had to take a look at their existing budgets, consider projects that would not be continuing, look for opportunities for reductions, some trade-offs in work program items. So that was the initial direction. And then subsequent to that, there was also some additional rounds as we started to get some additional financial information, understand some of the concerns about how to meet the gap. A second round included some reductions in, in overall department budgets, still maintaining all those strategic items. And then another round, considering the, the overall gravity of kind of the, the gap that was involved. And so some of the, there are some additional questions that were explored in terms of what the trade-offs would be in terms of implementation. The other piece to that is the, kind of what's shown up here on the slide, is it talks about, within the implementation framework of the strategic plan, there's a few different pieces. One is a piece about prioritization criteria that are shown within that plan. Another is this idea that, that there's a kind of cycle of work that's involved. And the intention there is to follow a plan, do check and adjust cycle, so that we know that we're going through an overall process of developing a budget, refining our financial work forecasts, and then incorporating those into the final budget deliberations. But then also applying measurement and adjustment going forward, so that we can determine whether or not we're starting to meet some of those objectives and make some changes accordingly. And then I think the, the third piece of that was also this notion that there's three different buckets. And so the three different buckets, you might recall, and we don't have a slide unfortunately, but it talked about critical, or it talked about strategic items, which were the key items that we were talking about at that workshop in June. And then there's this notion about critical services and timely opportunities. And part of the idea behind that framework was that for the timely opportunities, we know that there's always going to be some particular things that might come along that we need to address. But how we manage those and, and address those and connect those to the strategic plan is important, so that we're not, so that we can modulate the flow of those kind of additional requests that come in on a periodic basis. So that was an objective, to try and kind of manage that, that body of work. The third piece, which is really critical, and I think goes directly to this question of budget and how you fund it, is what the, the pocket of critical services looks like. And understanding that those are things that are responsibilities of the city under all circumstances. They might be mandates. They're always going to be important. And really starting to look at what that, that core body of services looks like. And that's, I think, really key, and I think a part of the next steps with this process, is really taking a hard look at those pieces. And as Beth mentioned, there is a budgetary item for a services assessment that's included in that budget. So part of that is taking a look at that, those critical services, which will allow the city to right-size some of the work, and also potentially unlock some dollars to go towards strategic planning. Within the proposed strategic work plan, there is implementation activity on 23 different action items. Really what staff had to do, as they were looking at budgeting, the departments had to look at, was where there could be either full progress made or partial progress with the strategic actions. Some of Some of those are multi-year items, but really, the vast majority of those 23 actions are proposed to be occurring with staff-led efforts. So initial thoughts were a combination of staff or consultant or other resources to aid in the achievement of those. Really, we had to refine those, providing pretty good coverage, that's a fair number of actions that are being addressed. But there was some phasing involved, some scaling, some consideration on kind of how to do that work and really have it be a staff-led effort. Beth had talked about the three items that are non-labor budgetary requests that are associated with strategic plan, and those relate to MUNIS implementation, the transportation ballot measure, and then long-range funding for City Hall facilities.
Councilmember Hunt?
So, on the slide that was presented earlier, it said, "Community Engagement for City Hall." So, and this says, "Long Range Planning." So are they the same?
I believe they are the same, so one of the next steps with the long-range planning for City Hall was against community engagement around some of those functions and services to understand what interest there was in the community for, to support, a look at the city facilities.
And we'll be able to leverage existing staff resources to help with the communications fees. I think this is, these are dollars to help with the planning.
Planning for the community engagement, or planning for...
Planning for the facility itself. I think we'll leverage, we'll be able to leverage existing city resources on the communication side.
Well, there's some, the earlier slide said, "Community Engagement," so I'm just trying to determine which this is for, if it's for planning for the facility, if it's for community engagement around what the facility should be.
So my understanding was that the, it is for the long-range planning, and one of the next steps is doing some of that community engagement, as well as also working with a consultant on the facility planning part of that.
Okay. So, as far as the first step in the planning process, does the assessment of city services broadly, the $250,000 budget items, does that also involve community engagement as far as assessing how services are provided?
We have not, I've not identified how that plan will work at this point, so we're asking for the dollars to be allocated. We'll come back with the plan as we move forward.
Okay. I would very much be interested in knowing if we could do the, so I do support the assessment of city services, and I think that that's important, and I think that would provide us information that could be used around what the city needs as far as facilities, because I think the end goal of facilities is providing services to the community. So, I am supportive of the assessment of city services, and I'm not, at this time, supportive of this $50,000 items. And then, additionally, I did notice that on the slide where there's the information about the number of actions proposed, city leadership and services had five actions proposed from our budget workshop, and in our 2020 proposed budget, we have seven in the budget, and there's one item that's unlike the others, which is environmental stewardship, and that had three coming out of the budget workshop, and none in the proposed budget, and the other ones, for the other goal areas in the strategic plan, they're the same. So I don't support this long-range planning, and I think that it's putting the cart before the horse, because I think we should do the assessment of city services first.
And I'll just mention, certainly, my direction, talking with the mayor in my seven, eight days here on the job, is that the strategic plan really is driving this. So the strategic plan was the discussion with the community, so that is certainly a major component that's already been completed. So as we look at the assessment of services, the strategic plan outlines a whole variety of things, some of which we're not currently doing. So how can we align existing city resources in order to accomplish the plan? That's sort of an underlying document that we have just to start.
Councilmember Ray?
So, I have three things I want to touch on here. Since Councilmember Hunt brought up the city services assessment, I'm really very supportive of doing that. I think it would be even more effective if we could target it into areas we think would reap the biggest benefits. So instead of doing a across-the-board look, maybe we can do a little more targeted look on where the assessment should focus. Number two, I'm really, really disappointed with the words, "long-range planning for strategic hall facilities," because if you read the strategic plan, it doesn't say that. It says, "evaluate the condition and performance of current city facilities and options for improving service delivery." That has nothing to do with City Hall facilities, as I look at it. So, that disappoints me. And then, finally, I would like a breakdown on the MUNIS implementation in terms of how much of that $1.2 million is for services, how much is for equipment, and how much is for licensing or other elements, so we can really understand the breakdown of where that million-plus is going.
So, I'd like to go a little bit further with MUNIS. I would like to get our spend by year, net spend, and how much we think we have left in major spend from MUNIS. I have a couple more slides. So a little bit more detail on some of these, and then I'll also refer to the staff report. There's a large table. My staff would tell you, I love big tables, but it has a little bit more action-by-action to describe what's proposed for the next year's work program and what's budgeted. The table kind of provides a very high-level summary of that. As Councilmember Hunt indicated, it does show where there are some areas where there are some actions not being pursued, and that's particularly true in the environmental stewardship. There's a few more in city leadership and services. Under mobility, through the council workshop, the, two of the three prioritized actions have been included in here. There is one additional, the one item that is not in the work program, which you can reference on the table, is one about near-term actions. This was kind of those near-term capital items. That is included in the improved capital improvement plan, and it's slated to start in 2021, so it wouldn't be starting in 2020, but it'd be actually one year out. And then, there is a piece that was not prioritized but is included, and that is some early work related to the citywide transit plan. And really, that's limited to a staff-led white paper, looking at transit station area planning best practices, and producing some content related to that. Under growth and development, all six prioritized actions are included in the work program for next year. There's a partial work on the infrastructure master plan for areas planned for growth was one of the specific actions. We're anticipating that in 2020, we would do some internal staff work and convening to do good vetting and scoping of that project, and then the anticipated work would begin in 2021 and be a multi-year effort. So that's what's anticipated there. In most cases, the actions under growth and development are staff-led and have been scaled or phased in multiple years. Under environmental stewardship, as was previously noted, zero of the three prioritized actions were included. These relate to alignment of management approaches, a comprehensive view of land acquisitions, and then a dedicated funding source for priority land acquisitions. So these were not included. There was one implementation item, which was related to information for new residents and businesses that is being implemented this year, and will transition to ongoing work. Several of these items had large consultant dollar costs associated with them, which was part of the reason why they were not selected for implementation next year.
So, David? I just, I have a bad reaction when we look at same number of mobility actions, same number of growth and development, the same number of social and economic vitality, more leadership and services, same number of infrastructure, and none in environmental stewardship. You've done, you've given us, you've teed up why that is, and yet, and yet, that seems just wrong. And I don't know exactly what to do about it. I don't know if it's city going back and looking, is there something else that, off of the strategic plan, other areas? It just seems wrong to go to zero in one area when everything else is the same or more. So, again, you've done a good explanation as to the rationale of where you're at. It just, various people have said various things, had, they had bad initial reactions to, and I'm having a bad initial reaction to that one.
Great. And Councilmember Hunt?
I also had a bad reaction to this, and I think if it is an issue with the actions that were prioritized out of budgeting, we discussed in the formulation of the strategic plan that there are a lot of things in the plan, there are a lot of potential actions to address the goal areas, but I think part of why we have the plan is to make sure that we're progressing on all these fronts. So if it has to do with those actions and not, and you said a high consultant dollar amount, I think we just need to know how we can progress in the strategic plan on this front, so we need an option other than a zero in that category. Thank you.
Yeah, let us come back. We'll take, I think, some good suggestions to look at the rest of the list and see what might make sense.
Or maybe a piece of something on the list.
You bet.
Council Deputy President Batiste?
So, I would, a couple of things. I am very supportive of seeing the white paper for the future light rail, being able to get out in front of that issue, I think is incredibly important, and I think that's great to have that there. I wanted to echo what was being talked about in terms of environmental stewardship, and I would be supportive, even if we need to, it seems like, just going from three to zero, that there could be something that we at least could get started in that area, so we are making progress to echo what Councilmember Hunt just spoke about. And even if we needed to take a look at one of the other categories, where we, maybe we need to pull back on one thing in one other category, just so we could be making progress, I think that that would be, that would be great.
Councilmember Walsh?
So, David, remind me how many actions overall there were in the plan?
Don't have the number, I'm making attempts.
So let me talk while you're thinking through that. My initial thought in looking at the proposal was, 23 actions in the 2020 proposed budget is a lot. That seems like we're taking on a lot. And I understand some of those are partial, and so maybe that mitigates it a little bit, but my concern is actually that we're taking on more, biting off more than we can chew. And I would rather do something quality than make a so-called promise that we're going to do something and then not have it get done. It's my initial thoughts.
I think it's a fair statement. I didn't count, but I think there's, you know, 50-some-odd, 50, 60-some-odd actions that were identified through that first phase of work, and you might recall that through the strategic planning processes were identified as potential actions, and that we would also refine and look at that on a regular basis. So as we made some progress, we might find that we didn't quite have the impact that we were anticipating, or we had missed an element of work. Really, the goals for the actions are to help us to move the needle on the objectives, and then eventually move the needle on the goals. So, that, I think, can be considered. To your point about the kind of sheer number and breadth, I think that's a fair comment. I think that staff, when they took a look at the overall work program, there are a combination of things which naturally marry together. So for example, in growth and development, there's two different objectives related to growth allocations or targets, and really, those are two kind of pieces of the same effort. You know, one is getting a handle on how are we doing relative to the progress of the existing allocations, and the next one is about how do we proactively influence the next steps? That's the case in a few of these different items. A few of these, another handful, are things that are currently underway. Mobility master plan is currently underway, but will be completed next year, as an example. And so, there's a handful of those. So, you know, I think it is ambitious from a staff-led effort, but there is also some work that's underway.
So, another question there. This was a five-year strategic plan?
Correct.
So, we're looking at this in making progress on something like half of the actions in this first year?
I think it was always, so there are for sure some meatier actions that will take multiple years. So, infrastructure master plan for areas recommended for growth, for example, is one of those. The tackling some longer-term issues about operations and maintenance for infrastructure as opposed to just new investments, that's going to take some consideration as well. And then, there's also the piece about understand that we were always anticipating that we would modify or add to actions over time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I seem to recall the number 83. Maybe that's, it's something like that, and I think, you know, if you said, if you came up with a list of home improvement projects, and your list was 83 items long, and you had five weekends to do it, right? You wouldn't get a fifth of those done in the first weekend. You would start a bunch of, you know, you'd get some low-hanging fruit, and then you would start into some of the more challenging ones, right? And I think that's what, I think it was 83. So, I mean, I think that's the context of why this particular number. Some of them are low-hanging fruit, and some of them are going to take five years.
I think that's a fair statement.
Can you tell I did some work around the house this weekend?
Or how many friends you have were handyman, I guess, could be part of the equation. Moving on to the next three areas. So, under social and economic vitality, five of the six prioritized actions that were identified by council are proposed, plus one additional action. That one additional action was related to small business startup, so, and that's really kind of continued and enhanced work with startup 425 and others. There is somewhat contingent on receiving some grant funding that the city is looking forward to. Not included in the strategic work plan as proposed, that was prioritized, was review of city permitting, and that was one that we had identified as a need for some consultant dollars, and so that was reduced or pushed off to future implementation, if you will. There are some other pieces that are, be partially implemented. The, and there was some action related to enhanced business recruitment, and there were some dollars that were suggested along with that to update the sector analysis. We are, wouldn't be able to do that. The economic development department's looking at some grants to see if they can pull those resources into, in order to accomplish that. And then, the other one was the healthy community strategy, which the strategy itself will be completed next year, but the first year implementation is not funded. So, that's in part because we don't know the full outcomes of the strategy, but also, if we go into implementation, we'd be primarily staff-led efforts, or be looking for alternative funding sources. Under city leadership and services, there were five prioritized actions. Those have all been proposed, plus two additional actions. The ones that were not, that were added included the organizational development work with the employee experience plan, relatively low costs, actually, no costs, primarily work with city staff, all city meetings twice per year, and related training associated with that. And then, there, one of the other ones was some work with, work with community to remove barriers to programs and services. Some of that work will be accomplished with our equity and cultural competency work with city staff. Wouldn't be as comprehensive, meaning that we wouldn't, we're not anticipating having high engagement with the community to take a look at those services, but we would start to identify some of the services where some projects could be implemented. So, not as comprehensive, not as involved with the community, but some starting work there. And then, finally, under infrastructure, there was one item that was prioritized, and that had to do with ensuring that as we bring on new capital, that we have policy in place to direct the implementation of kind of resources for operations and maintenance at that same time. And then, finally, the last piece, which I think has mostly been spoken about, is this kind of strategic plan implementation, and this is really kind of this next critical step in the work. The city assessment of services is the most important piece there. There is also the work on developing performance measures, the data collection, and then also there's, there is some work that's involved in making sure that we have those appropriately identified. One of the pieces that we haven't talked about is what the appropriate targets are for those performance measures. So there's a body of work that's related to that, that'll be staff-led. And then, there was originally envisioned that there would be, there'd be a biannual survey that would occur on the off-years of the next survey that would occur on the off-years of the National Community Survey. Having just completed the National Community Survey, our recommendation is that we hold off on that expenditure for this next year. That's it. And that is that, as they say.
Council President, members of the council. We really just had the final slide, which I think was just a reiteration of, of the beginning with the policy questions, and I appreciate the council's discussion. I think really we've, we've covered, if not all these points, most of these points. Certainly, I think I've heard from you on the issue of the property tax, bank capacity, the utility taxes, is how those impact, then also the increases, proposed increases in the city utilities. We've talked a little bit about the park fees. We've not talked a lot about class and comp this evening. I think the comments I've heard from the council were generally supportive, but looking perhaps at some timing with implementation. The city services assessment. Again, I, I don't suspect that this will be looking at everything that we do. I think it will be looking at, at certain targeted areas. The budget prioritization plan, investments with funding constraints for 2020, I think we've just spoken about that. It's all about alignment. It's all about how do we spend our money and how do we get the work done the community would like to see us get done? And I think the strategic plan provides an excellent blueprint for that, but the city's ongoing day-to-day operations really have not yet been aligned. And I think the goal is to spend the next 10 months to make sure that we go into the 21 budget process in a better place. And then I guess the overall approach we've talked about all evening long. So unless there's final questions, comments, concerns, that ends this evening's installment, and we would look forward to, first of all, seeing as many of you as possible tomorrow with the, the school district for the meeting, and then reconvening here for the, the second part of this discussion.
Councilmember Winterstein.
Yeah, appreciate it. We've had an opportunity this evening to talk about, and some of my colleagues have taken advantage of expressing their support for certain line items, maybe lack of support for some others. And I just wanted to summarize my thoughts for the night is that, you know, we have a $5.2 million deficit in the general funds. There were some expenditure reductions, mostly done through unfunded positions, authorized but unfunded positions, take care of the majority of that. In this plan, there's also the total new revenue is for, represents $2.5 million in new revenue. And my, the lens I'm looking at is where can I find another 2.5 or maybe a little bit less, because the parks fees actually have to do for, direct for services. It's, it's the using facilities and that I can maybe accept, though I haven't decided on the parks fees yet. And, and the, and I, so I'm looking for where can I find another almost 2.5 in cuts in these? You provided us a list of these, but what I think is very, very important, and this is where I'm going to go back to the, what we noted earlier, and it's in the data, that, that there's a heck of a lot less construction that has led to potentially more than the 2.5 million deficit that we still have to make up. And, and when it comes to lower sales tax on construction, property tax on new, on new construction, and then fees from DSD, there alone, we're projecting potentially up to $3 million shortage compared to prior year on that. Just the slowdown in construction itself can, can, is larger than, than the new revenue that we're trying to identify. If that slowdown can be attributed to the moratorium, then this is something we did to ourselves. We said, "We're gonna fix it, we're gonna make sure we grow in the central area the way that we want to grow." And then we said, we put a stop on this, and we, we always heard that, "Hey, that could make, have a real impact downstream." Now we're getting a cost for that, and I'm not complaining about that, but we now know the cost for that. We did this to ourselves. We said, "We want to make something better." There was a risk for lower revenue. We have, we're having a cost now associated with that. I do not know how we can go to our citizens and say, "You know what? And we need to raise your taxes to make up for this deficit that we did to ourselves with the moratorium." That's, that's where I'm coming from, and I think it's important. That's the lens. And we're going to continue, I'm going to be here every night as well, I'm going to continue to stay open and listen to everybody's arguments, but I'm looking for how we find another 2.5 million in cuts.
Councilmember Ray.
I just want to kind of push back a little on that. I, I think that saying that this is a result of the moratorium and stating that as a, as something that's given is unfounded, and I think maybe we can get some data from, from finance on, on, on that. But I also believe that the moratorium was the will of the people, so I think that we did not do this to ourselves. We have a difficult situation, we have a difficult time to manage. Every municipality in the area is, has a difficult time right now. We actually have gone into it slower because of our very robust sales tax revenue. So I don't think it's fair to say that we did, we did this to ourselves with the moratorium, and I just, I just think that conveys the wrong message. I think going forward, we need to figure out how to balance this, and some of it may be new taxes. I don't, I'm not opposed to additional cuts. I think there's probably opportunities, but I just, I can't let that sit out there with the moratorium being the sole cause of our, our financial woes, because I don't think that's fair or founded.
Other, other comment. Councilmember Walsh.
I will end on a note, just saying thank you very much to the finance department, because I have certainly, I haven't been on council in previous budget sessions, but this presentation and the budget that I have seen here compared to the ones that I've seen in other cities is a marked improvement, and I am very much appreciative of all of the information that we have.
Councilmember Hunt or Council Deputy President Bateese? Council Deputy President Bateese.
Just wanted to echo thank you to Beth and the finance team and all of the work that's gone into the budget. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Hunt, anything?
Well, I, I think it would be interesting to know if there is a way to assess the impact of the moratorium, but I also think it would be extremely difficult, because we can't know what would have happened if we hadn't done it. So I'd be interested to know how it would be possible to assess it, to see if we could get, you know, data to support, if there, if we can get data, but I also, I'm not sure that we'll ever know what would have happened if we had done things differently. So that's, that's difficult, and I'll think about that more. And then, again, I mean, there are a few things in here that I think are not things that I think are the top priority as identified in the strategic plan, and so as we proceed with budget, I'll continue bringing those up.
So I'm going to come back to Paul, but first I'll also share my initial thoughts on this. I've been kind of waiting for this to happen for about 10 years. When I first got on council, it's because I had come on, as many of you have heard many times, I came out of a community in Minnesota that had been a fast-growing community in the '60s and '70s, and it sort of turned a corner in the '80s. And it went from being a growth community to being more of a sustained community. And we were able to grow our way out of a lot of things, because the way that the revenue system is structured in the state, when you're fast-growing, you have all sorts of knobs that you don't have when you're a more sustained-sized community. And so it does not surprise me that today we find ourselves more, having more in common with Sammamish and Mercer Island and some of the other communities in this area than we were five years ago. And so we have hard decisions in front of us, but they are, to my way of thinking, primarily an outgrowth. I mean, we've seen today that we haven't been gluttonous in our, in our revenues or our expenditures. We have been careful stewards, but the knobs that we find in front of us are, are more limited. And so we're going to have to make tough decisions, and I trust that we will, we will make those tough decisions with the, with the incredibly capable assistance of city staff, as always with this budget process. Paul, did you have another comment?
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's clear on the record that I was speaking about the depth, the, the revenue portion that's, the new revenue is, appears to be, or could be roughly equivalent to what the moratorium cost us, not the full 5.2, but the revenue makeup that, that's proposed here. And you can get there, again, by, and I don't know the sales tax construction activity, but we have an idea of what permitting has cost us, we have an idea of what property tax has costing us due to less construction, and those differences are about equivalent to the new revenue that we're, we're looking for. So that's, I want to make that point. I wasn't talking about the full 5.2, I was talking about the, the new revenue portion.
So with that, it doesn't look like there's any other comments. Anything? Director Goldberg, City Administrator Bob Kwitz? All right. So our next meeting, as noted, there is a special meeting tomorrow at 5:00 PM with the, between the city council and the Iskwa School District Board of Directors at the school district administrative offices at 5 o'clock to address possible areas of collaboration and assistance addressing urgent and emergent health crisis in, in the community. And then we will be back here for the second half of the study session. I want to thank everybody. We were scheduled for three hours tonight, and we got done ahead of that despite having lots of good and thoughtful questions from my fellow council members. So I want to thank all of you as well for getting done a little early so I can get home and say goodnight to my wife before she goes to bed. So with that, we are concluded.